Six o'clock, call the meeting to order. We'll pause for a moment of silent reflection. Mike Romack, no, he isn't fudged.
I'm going to touch the agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Willie, leave us in the roll call and determination of forum?
I'll be glad to.
Jerry Bermeister.
Here.
Corey Hall.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Brian Williams.
Here.
Marissa Skaggs.
Here. Five out of five members, we have a session, we have a forum. In the Google Drive, you will find the minutes from last town council meeting on July the 11th. Any questions, comments, concerns, or changes? There aren't any questions or comments, I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
Motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from the July 11th meeting, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. We do not have claims for the month, but we can go to the clerk treasurers report, this is for March.
A little late, but better late than never. As you can see here, by the end of March, we had 1.54 million in the general fund. Uh, we just finished our state board of accounts audit. Uh, we've got a meeting next. A couple of weeks for an exit meeting. Uh, basically, they said everything was fine, there was just some reporting that's changed due to federal laws and we'll get all that straight, so other than that, that's all I have.
Any questions for Willie regarding the clerk treasurers report from March? There are any questions, entertain a motion for approval?
Motion approved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the clerk treasurers report for March, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. We will move over to department reports for July. Martin?
Hello.
Hi.
Mine is quick and easy tonight, uh, July, we had pistol and rifle qualifications, everybody qualified, so we can carry guns. And um total dispatched incidents were 1,193 for the month. And I like to always throw out the criminal arrests, there were 47 adult criminal arrests. Met with Karen today, submitted our budget, that went smoothly, and uh, it's also Connie's birthday today.
And she chose to celebrate with us. Happy birthday Connie.
Happy birthday.
Thanks for celebrating with us Connie. Any questions for Chief Farr?
Thank you chief.
Thanks.
Ashen Buck is very well.
No.
Um, moving on to the park report, Aaron Burris.
Good evening. Don't have much outside of Maryport Park Fest. The 5th of September, followed by Heritage Fair and Fall Festival, so mark your calendars. Don't miss it, it's a great time. Any questions for me?
Anything for Aaron? Nope. Thanks Aaron.
The, the park looks great, by the way.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I will pass that along to the guys that take care of it.
Moving on to the planning department, Hannah Rose Babanski.
So, uh, you have my report in front of you, if you have any questions, let me know. Um, a few things I want to highlight is, uh, Carrie and I are working with Tammy Bowman at the uh foundation to apply for another grant for interior exterior rehabilitation, since that's one of our oldest historic structures. Uh, Mr. DNR, it's called an HPF grant, it's 6040. Um, and we're the applying body, but Tammy and the foundation are the paying body. We're a certified local government, so we get a better match from DNR than if she were to just apply. Um, and they gave us some really good feedback on how to make our application a lot stronger. Um, they actually reached out to us to say, hey, we think this is a good project, please reapply, because we didn't get it last year. Um, so that's really exciting. And we have two um subdivisions that are getting pretty close to finishing, so Arabian Point, which is um the custom homes on the corner of Bain and Tile. Um, there's five homes left to build, four of those are mechanical, um, so the lots are not vacant, um, you'll see like those and, and stuff like that. And then, um, one vacant lot, we're waiting for some utilities to get moved with a larger project so that he can build there. And then in Carrot Glen, we have 18 homes left to build, uh, six are mechanical, seven were up for final inspections, I don't think they finished those this week. Um, and then there's five vacant lots there, so those are getting really close. Um, and Hunsinger Farm is probably never gonna end, so that one's gonna be a very long time.
There's five sections of Hunsinger Farms, is that right?
There is, and we have three, four, and five left to do, and some of two.
Yep.
Still is quite a while left.
Got it.
But that's all I have, do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Hannah?
Okay, Chris.
Good morning.
Hannah, I do have one comment about Hunsinger Farms, if anyone's looking for a nice place to go walk in the evening, they've got a beautiful trail around the lake, it's just perfect.
It's fantastic.
Yes, it's very nice.
They did a really good job.
Yeah.
Great. Scott, town manager's report?
Okay, if we could scroll to the photos. Wish we could turn out the lights on, have I shown you these photos? It's on the TV, it comes up a little bit better. So, when we did the repaving on North Pendleton Avenue as our summer paving project, we discovered that there was a lot, the brick was in a lot better shape, and there was a lot more of it left from hundred and some odd years ago. And it's from State Street all the way to the entrance to the park. If you look on the right photo, you can see where they had bricks lined up with where the rail was for the interurban. So, um we made a decision to go ahead and put on the downtown revitalization plan that we're in the midst of, of starting. And that we will take that back, the goal will be to take that back. Now, the question comes up from the public, well, why didn't you just stop where you were at? Well, there's, there's places along there where there's huge amount of brick that we would have to replace, it's just gone, it's been dug up over years replacing, uh, water lines and stuff. We'd have to figure out what we would do with utilities. So, we went ahead and paved over it, knowing it would probably take us three to five years anyway to um get the project, get everything lined up so that we can rehabilitate the bridge. Mostly, the biggest problem will be finding the replacement uh, replacement brick, dealing with traffic, and all the planning goes with it, so if anybody asked, why didn't you just go ahead and leave it exposed? Well, it would have been, you know, a thousand feet of trip hazard for probably two years. So that wasn't wise, it's been milled down twice, I know of. Um, and the present contractor, I don't know if they did it last time it was milled down, um, because I wasn't the town manager, but um, we scared the heck out of the milling operator, because we told him there was still rail, which is true, underneath there. And his million dollar machine would be instantly ruined if he went too deep. And sure enough, it worked, he was very careful and stayed out of the brick, some of it did get scarred. Um, if you go and rehab a street like this with a lot of scarring, one of the tricks is they just turn the brick over, which you can imagine is a lot of labor and that sort of thing. So, um, anyway, it was a nice discovery. Hopefully, we've had, we have other streets that we discover more brick that's, we can rehabilitate. The public was really excited about it, tell by social media. Uh, the next project, just to let you know, you're about ready to see this happening. It's a joint project with the school corporation, the red is a sidewalk. And they, uh, that's uh, being paid for by the high school. Well, by the school corporation, the yellow is what the town is paying for, it's about a 40, 60 split, we share cost based on the lineage of um, the sidewalk. You know, this is a big safety hazard, and it's becoming more and more true even um, with the twisters across the street. And then, one of the things now that I've got somebody in high school that I pick up, is that a lot of kids, believe it or not, go right from high school and they go to the gym across the street to work out, you see a lot of that, there's just a lot of foot traffic. And um plus, don't forget the trail when we rehabilitate 67, there's gonna be a trail along 67, 67 will be wider. But it'll be out there, it'll be eight, 10 feet, help me out, 10 feet. Uh, and it'll turn, and then we'll complete um connect that up, once that trail's in place. The other thing you'll notice, the entrance to Pizza Hut and the fitness center there, we stopped short because we think at some point we're going to um flatten that curve a little bit, make it less dangerous. And by flattening it um to, it'll be pedestrians will be easier seen by cars coming off of 67. So anyway, we're anxious to get that project, and the quotes came in were quite reasonable, which is not happening a lot with concrete projects these days. Um, the next thing I want to show you is, this is a fur, um, would happen with fall festival and such, but it's our maximum street closure for events. Um, if you look, the red is the street closure. The yellow horizontal line is Water Street, I don't know if you can see it that well. Um, if it's in yellow, that's basically what we call a soft close. And then purple, there's two strips of. Yeah, so um so anyway, one of the things that's different now is that we're not gonna have anything on that side of State Street, the last event where we had both sides of Pendleton Avenue closed. State Street was still active, should be down here. It was just getting too dangerous with pedestrians going across and the heavy traffic we have on state. So we've decided to have everything will now be north of State Street. Um, and we'll, we'll start to use uh, concrete barricades in key locations. Just because people are getting crazy enough to do, drunk enough sometimes to drive through crowds anymore. Um, this will be split in half, just so these residents can have access. But it'll be closed to um, everybody except for residents only, so the few cars that'll come down here, this half will be um, for vendors. And our electric department has put up a a lot more um electric outlets that can be spider boxed. This is the entrance to the park. We'll put concrete barricades over here for um, John Street. Also here on Water Street, we'll start to utilize this more, and of course, this is a depot parking lot, which will eventually be rehabilitated and be under asphalt instead of the gravel that we see. Starting to use um, North Pendleton Avenue more. Um, so we'll take out temporary, no parking along Main Street. And no parking along Water Street, we have to leave this open. Um, because the apartments here, they need to be able to have access. So anyway, it doesn't look like that's a lot of work, but it took a lot of group and their input, police fire, street department, electric, water. Um, and believe it, we went through probably, this is version five of the map. Because as soon as we thought we were done, somebody'd go, what if? And then we'd start all over again. Um, the other thing, Salt Barn is gonna start construction um, here pretty quick before the next town council meeting. Be also seeing the water department is the buildings that are just now used for storage, it's the old water treatment plant, they're gonna start to spruce those up a little bit. They're power washing them, and then gonna repaint, and then some of those windows that were just being uh, there's no windows there, it's just fiberboard or plywood in the windows, we're gonna take that out, put the windows back, too many people drive by there every day picking up their kids to not have that look better. Um and then Hannah reminded me that uh, Ricky and his team did a great job on installing some ADA ramps that had never been installed at the Rawlings House on the East property boundary. And uh, thanks to Hannah's leadership and Ricky's and team's skills, they were able to take care of that, so those are some of the highlights, any questions?
Questions for Scott? Thanks.
Yep. You Scott.
Okay. Moving on to old business, we have 2417 hotels and places of public lodging. We talked about this a little bit last month, uh, but there was still some work to be done. And um our planning department worked diligently on this. Essentially, one of the big changes is that there's no longer a probationary phase. You either have a license or you are you don't have a license, um, pending a review with the BZA. Uh, Hannah, anything else to add to this?
No, um, you know, like for us, as I said, we worked through this, we round tabled it, just kind of went through every page to see what worked, what didn't, and try to just make it as simple and straightforward as possible. Um, so I, I think it's a really reasonable organs, just to make sure we kind of keep our lodging areas of lodging quiet. Um, and a lot of other places have licenses like this, so I, I think it's pretty reasonable, and I don't see us having a, like a huge number of hotels here at the time. But you know, I, I know we have some interest in something coming, so this is just an extra mechanism for us to use to um keep them compliant.
And the question was raised last month whether this had cross-reference to the South Madison Fire Protection Territory False Alarm Ordinance or Resolution, and it does. Um, it does reference that, that currently exists uh, as one of the things that could be taken into consideration during the revocation process. Any questions about this for Hannah Rose?
There's a lot of, lot of progress and a lot of work went into this, I just want to compliment you, everyone else that was involved, it's very apparent, and kudos for the great work here.
Thank you. Anything else? If there aren't any other questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion for approval?
We have a motion for approval, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 2417 hotels and places of public lodging, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Given that we don't currently have a hotel, nor are we expecting one in the next 30 days, I think we can wait to do this. Does that read next? If they're putting one up in 30 days, we got bigger problems. Yeah. Um, next up, we are gonna have Carrie Craig present on ordinance 2423 again, which is the designated outdoor refreshment area. We are not gonna call for vote on this tonight, uh, we have a public information session next Tuesday?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, the 14th, and then um, we are having a special town council meeting on the 21st um, to do, go over this again, so uh there'll be no vote tonight, we're just kind of going back through the presentation again, and there's been some updates to the map and the boundaries um coming out of the small group that's been working on this, so with that, I'll let Carrie take over.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council, Carrie Craig, community development coordinator. Um, just walking through uh, the ordinance which each of you um, have received. Um, I won't go by every uh, point, but I'll just touch on um, the, the main ones. Um, as all of you know, um, each community can have up to seven Doras um, created. Um, a Dora in order to be created must have at least one, what is known as a designated permittee, which is a bar restaurant that has an approved um, liquor license. Um, what, um, let, let me also begin by saying, um, after um, we, we met in July, uh, we formed a working group, that working group was comprised of Marissa and Steve, who represent the town council. It was also comprised, is comprised of Scott, Hannah Rose, Denise, myself, um, Mike Gromack, who's president of the Chamber of Commerce, Steve Shug, who's president of Main Street, Lisa Floyd, who's a community volunteer, and then Gary Brammer, who's a downtown business owner. So we have met twice, um, combed over um, the last iteration of the um, ordinance, and um, we decided to um redraw the map, um, so the map um, was extended further down to um, West Elm Street. Um, the goal there was um, that once that uh, portion of Elm Street is bricked, it would allow um, the uh, South Madison Community Foundation, that i- i- if it wanted to host a very nice event, it, we could um, you know, cut up the street off to traffic and allow them to be able to have an event on uh, that uh, piece of property, and then uh, be able to um y- y- you know, have alcohol there uh, without a problem. I, i- it goes then um, just east down a little, um, juts down a little on South Pendleton and over east on East Elm Street, then north up on uh, Broadway, over to East Street. Um, and then it takes in uh, the park minus the playground, so it takes, it encompasses all of the park property minus the playground. Um, and the reason for that is, if we, if we didn't um, in incorporate the park now, we couldn't do so in the future, because there's no bar restaurant within that um, limit in order to create a Dora. So, what the working group decided was, in incorporating the park boundaries, um, we would only turn that, the town would only turn that on for festivals and events. And they would have to go through a special application process, which is highlighted in section 13. They would have to receive town approval uh, and parks and recreation board approval in order to do that. Um, the hours would be set for the park um, from 10 a.m. uh, to 11 p.m. for those festivals uh, and events. So uh, that would allow for um, Barnhart Field, for example, for Park Fest. Then, so you, you take that property and then you come back uh, down south, i- i- if you saw um, Scott's map, it, it goes up to the bridge on, on North Pendleton Avenue, down south again, back to West Water Street, over to um, South Main, and then South Main back down to um, the community foundation. I don't think a map would personally got uploaded, but I, I think all of you have that map. So that was um, one of the, the big changes. Dora logo and signage, um, those are being worked on um, by Kyle out at signage for us, um, we, we hired them to do that, so hopefully, um, by next week, we'll have that, that logo prepared for us. Uh, we updated the hours of operation from um, so downtown Dora, uh, which um, everything but the park would operate from 7 a.m. to um, 11 p.m. um, Monday, uh, Sunday through Saturday, so 365 days a week. Cattellus have said that they uh, would be interested in coming in as a designated permittee in addition to the bank restaurant and the stable. Uh, so we would now um, have uh, three permittees, but that may be an issue for them right now, because they're going through some changes with their liquor license, and they're getting ready to I, I believe, add a liquor license to the um, new establishment, they're opening up the, the new pizza uh, restaurant. Um one of the things that was in the original ordinance was um, that the town would work closely with Main Street Pendleton to um, sell um, Dora containers, as, as you know, um, in, in order for alcoholic beverages to move within the door, they have to be in a specially designated container that has to be uh, clear, non-glass or non-breakable, have the Dora logo on it, and be no more than 16 ounces. Um, originally, um, this um, ordinance was based on one uh, Batesville's ordinance, um, and Greensburg's ordinance that had designated their Main Street organizations to be able to sell um, those containers. That was just, i- i- that just wasn't gonna work out. Um, and, and so, that's reverting back to each business owner to purchase those containers so long um, as they um, meet those particular requirements, we also had a wristband um component to our ordinance, um, which was permissible, um, and strongly encouraged by the IATC, but it was just unworkable, and um, not only did we talk about this at the last council meeting, um, several people had, had, had mentioned to us that it, it, it just from a patron standpoint, it, it, it wasn't workable. I think that is yeah, that is a, about it in terms of um, what we've done. I did uh, have a conversation um, with folks in Westfield, in Noblesville, um, Noblesville and Speedway have been the last two communities to come on board, there are now 16 communities across the state, as I've mentioned. Um, but I did have a good, a long conversation with staff in Fort Wayne, Fort Wayne being, they have two Doras there, um, and their largest Dora um, is, they said, going uh, game busters. Um, they have seen a 20 to 30% um, increase in um, alcohol sales week over week. Um, they have seen increased sales in their retail establishments. It has brought about um, a lot of energy, but more importantly, it's brought about a lot of synergy between the bars and restaurants and the retail establishments, in fact, the retail establishments have sort of realigned their business hours to better uh um, work with um, patrons who are coming into those bars and, and, and restaurants. And they have not seen an uptick in crime. And one of the things they said too, was they had done their due diligence with other similar cities in Ohio and Michigan. Um, prior to that, talking to their police departments, and even in those states where they have uh, doors, they have not seen an uptick in crime or just nuisances um, generally. Um, one, one last thing I will add, I um, I did um, have a, a brief conversation today with um, Alex at the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission. I had been under the impression from a webinar that I had participated on that, and this had been in the um, they, and this is in the Batesville ordinance, as well as I think Greensburg's. That you cannot move a Dora container from one restaurant into another. Um, and that is not in statute, that is up to each local entity. And um, already, the statute is pretty clear that um, any business owner within that Dora can refuse um, entrance of an out, of a Dora container into their establishment. Um, so I'll leave it up to, um, we'll leave it up to the council to decide if, if you want to amend the ordinance to take out that requirement altogether, and just let each individual establishment decide if they want um, a, a full container to come into to their business.
Carrie, can you explain the park situations better to me, to the community? Can you have liquor any day of the year, or is it just special events?
That's a great question, uh, so one of the things I found out that I was really surprised about is Indiana has a very liberal open container law, which means the only place that you cannot bring an open container is inside your car. Um, I can already go to Perky's, for example, and buy a case of beer and come downtown here and sit on a bench and drink that beer openly. Um, without threat of arrest, as long as I'm not making a public nuisance, I'm okay to do that. Um, and so, all this is allowing is for bars and restaurants to be able to allow their patrons to come in, buy alcohol, and then take that out. The park could um you know, parks and other public spaces could prevent people from doing, you know, having an open container on their property already. But because we have events and, and particularly in the sports complex and others, this just allows people to move um, freely with those alcoholic beverages. It will, for example, at Fourth at the Falls event, at, at Sports Complex, the, the designated permittee will no longer have to erect um, an area to contain those individuals, and I can tell you that's hard to enforce as it is, most people, you know, don't bother to um, to um, adhere by those rules. So it just, yes.
And I, you know, I kind of understand the special occasions to Four, for example. But my concern is, are we gonna have people in our park every day drinking?
Yeah, no.
It, we would only turn that part of the loop on for special permitted events, such as Fourth at the Falls or something that goes through the event process, I don't want to say just Fourth at the Falls, so we don't know if it's gonna happen next year, they may have another event or whatever, but an event such as Fourth at the Falls, we could turn that loop on, and then it would also allow our brick and mortar restaurants, who currently have been the beer vendor there, correct? That they can kind of fast track their vending permit to work up there, is that correct? Am I?
That is correct, yes.
And also where it's located within that arc section of the Dora will have its own temporary Section of the Dora will have its own temporary signage that says you may not cross this point. So it's only kind of for the specified area of the event. So it's not three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
That's my concern.
Special events.
And Aaron is here, but there is an ordinance, correct, from like nineteen ninety-four? That does prohibit alcohol in the park.
Which has to come through the town to be approved, as well as the the parks.
They would get a special event permit and then the park board would also be a secondary to that, if they wanna use.
The only way you can do it in the park is a special permit. Approved special permit turns it on just for the space as defined in the permit. Doesn't necessarily turn it on for the whole park. And don't forget, this does take out the playground.
I think that it's going to be more of a tour for. A vending situation where if a local. Permit does permitted designee decides that they're gonna go up there and be the vendor at an event like that. I think the likelihood of somebody purchasing a cocktail or a beer on State Street. And then walking the entire way to the sports complex without consuming that. Alcohol is going to be very rare, especially over the Fourth of July weekend, when it's eight hundred degrees outside. I, so the point of the drawing the back, the border the way that it is, is to allow for flexibility for special events. So I think that's where we're going to see it be more applied in the park versus saying carry in. I think it's gonna be more of a vendor-based use. And the, just one thing that Carrie didn't talk about, we were talking about the wristbands and that sort of thing. The permitted designees like the bank, the stable, the Telos, they reserve the right to say. No, I'm not giving you a Dora cup, or hey, I'd like for you to put on this wristband, so there they retain. Some authority over how they want, how they feel comfortable letting that alcohol leave their facility, is that correct?
That is correct, I mean, all the rules still apply to, you know, when you can cut, you know. When you can cut people off, those are two things, absolutely.
You know, one of the big concerns I have about this whole thing is is. Do we want people walking around flicker during the homecoming parade, do we want people walking around flickering Christmas and Pendleton Day?
I suspect people are doing that already. Yeah, I don't know, I, yeah, it's it's possible.
I I just feel like we're such a family community, and I, I don't wanna jeopardize that at all.
But I I I, yeah, so, I I would say that. All of these communities that have adopted Dora are probably consider themselves family. I I think it will be. It will be a positive economic opportunity for our downtown businesses. And again, from everything that I'd heard from from those folks in Fort Wayne. Things are 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 going very well, now you have, do have to consider that Fort Wayne's Dora is just across the street from. A a minor league baseball stadium, and that's bringing thousands of people into that Dora. But Westfield, you know, in talking to them, I mean, they think it's going to elevate. People coming into their downtown, and that's true of all of these.
And believe me, I'm the first one to talk about small business, you know, I I support these guys, you know, and.
But I think that's a poor question to ask because he. Carrie started it out with, you can already do that, there's nothing preventing somebody from drinking beer. Right along that parade. So I think that's a very important point. Is it doesn't loosen. The already loose laws on consuming alcohol in public.
I think that the other piece of the puzzle that, and I know I keep talking about the vending and all of that, but. I'm just thinking the the hours that our stores currently have, that sort of thing, I don't think this is going to be a situation where. The first night Dora is a thing, we run out of cups, I I just don't, I think we're gonna see it be a tool in the toolbox on. Days when there is, when Fall Fest is happening, and instead of. The bank competing with an elephant ear truck or a tenderloin truck, they're gonna have somebody come in. And sit down and eat and then possibly carry out a drink. But I don't think that the hours that we keep and the hours that are downtown is super active. I I would be surprised, I guess I would say, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't guarantee this, but I just feel as though it's going to be a pretty slow gradual start. I think it's gonna be, but I think it's gonna be a very powerful tool on the days where we have events. In in my estimation of how I kind of observe town work, but. Any questions for Carrie? Again, we're gonna have a public information session on this next Wednesday, six o'clock or six thirty, six thirty.
It'll be here in the council.
Yep, here in this council, so. If we have more questions or concerns, we can bring them up then, and then we'll have a special town council meeting on the twenty first for the purpose of this. And the reason for that is we are trying to get this. File, like if it goes to approve, if we approve it, then we would love for it to be in effect for Fall Fest. Which is September sixth and seventh. So that's, that's why we're having a special meeting, if it if it gets approved at that meeting. Then we'll file with the state, and it's been taking about eight to ten days to get that.
Or less.
Or less.
And all the, the actual entire commission does not need to approve it, it it's looked over by Alex, who's an employee. At the I A T C, she reviews it for, just make sure that it meets the requirements set out in the statute. She then forwards it on to the chair of the commission, Jessica Allen, who reviews it. And then once she signs off on it, then it is basically approved. And then the community can move forward.
Anything else for Carrie?
Like the hotel ordinance, again, I wanna commend, I mean, ton of work clearly went into this, and Mike was mentioning it as well. I I love bringing in all of these stakeholders to do the work, coming together for a common cause, and I just wanna celebrate that, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks for leadership.
Thank you, Carrie.
Marky a comment?
Jerry came to that with me the other day and pushed the base down on all, we had to dissect all this to figure out how we're gonna enforce it. And if a Dora allows me to go into the stable and buy a beer and walk out. Which is not allowed right now, you know, I can't do this out. So that behooves the restaurants and the bars to make money, because now I can take my beer and go to the desk. If that lets me, I'm going with a with an open table and it's coke. But I'm carrying my beer, because it's Indiana, in the door. I can come to the door and drink with people that bought beer at the stable with my, because I live right on State Street, I'd walk down, I'm I'm drinking. With my buddy, with my six man. I don't know if this draws attention to that behavior, that hasn't been drawn attention, because people assume you can't do that. So now everybody's gonna know you can. I don't think we're gonna have that. Well, that's why I'm asking, so, do we, does the ordinance read that you're not allowed, because under Indiana law, you're allowed open carry.
Carry a beer into Dora.
Or do I have to put my beer down at the edge of Dora, step into Dora, buy a beer, and then drink it, walk back, stick up a beer and go?
We, we do in in this ordinance, if you look at. It is. Eighteen, prohibition of outside beverages, persons may not consume beverages within a Dora. Which were not purchased from a designated permittee or vendor, and or which were brought from outside a Dora into the subject Dora. The refilling of an authorized container with an alcoholic or other beverage is strictly prohibited. Individuals found to be in violation shall be subject to a fine of up to five hundred dollars.
So the the true Dora does two things, one, it behooves your local restaurants to sell more alcohol, because I can't bring a beer into the door. And number two, it softens up or eases up the permitting process. Maybe called that like the foundation, if they were to have a get together in their backyard. Currently, they would have to reach out the excise, fill out that little form. It's not an exuberant thing, it doesn't take months to do. But that's what the door would, you get rid of the excise portion. And your establishments would be able to sell more. I was just trying to figure out the positives of the door, I read Noblesville's website, but I was like, eh, eh. And if you dig deep, it's so they don't have to, we're admitting the excises at your local establishments and so. A little more alcohol, for example, Christmas of Pendleton. I loved going to the stable and having breakfast to mimosas, well now I can take one of the most out, throw snowballs at those kids.
You wanna throw the first snowball this year? Yeah, they're not the styrofoams, it's not the fun.
The foundation would still have to have the proven and proofed thing. They'd have to go through that process if unless they wanted to walk from.
Yeah.
One of the establishments to the, correct, so they, they would have to have an approval when that just goes through that.
Interesting, so then. Does the door, and then we're just using the foundation as a link. Just having a door go into the foundation change anything, if they have to go through the permitting process and have a little party.
Well, they would have to to receive, they would not have to seek their permit from. I've had the Indiana, I've talked about the permission, it's whoever they.
The caterer.
To. To provide that alcohol, so for example, that could hire these downtown bars and restaurants. That bar and restaurant would have to actually make an application for a vendor permit for that particular.
Which is the exact same thing without the door.
But again, you don't, you do not have to roll off particular areas.
Like the beer garden philosophy.
Basically now, you you have a Dora, in 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 essence, would you would you roll off a particular?
You had a physical boundary.
Exactly, yes.
And I would assume though, well, now, if they had their own little party. And people wanted to walk out of the party and walk out of the town to buy antiques. Because the liquor licensed person doesn't have to contain them in the area.
Right.
So that's impossible.
Again, you know, in in some ways, I I guess one way you could look at it is that the law was sort of discriminatory against bars and restaurants, because again. I could walk into Perkey's and and buy alcohol and come down here and consume some binge. Whereas I could walk into a restaurant in downtown, go in and purchase some.
Walk out.
And walk out.
Anything else before we move on to the next thing? Again, we'll be back on the fourteenth at six thirty to discuss this further. Okay, moving on to new business, we have a vacancy on the planning commission for a term ending. December thirty first, twenty twenty-six, that was, that spot was previously occupied by Andrew Holloway. Andrew has moved to the park board, where he's very well suited, and so we have a vacancy. And so then do I appoint or do I nominate, how does that work? I always forget.
For the council?
No.
This is a presidential appointment?
Not sure if it's presidential or if it's for the council, will you look real fast?
Yes.
I think you would have nominated Andrew.
I think I, yes, well, Chet did it. It was, it was, Chet did the presidential appointment for Andrew.
It's a presidential appointment, you can just make that announcement.
Okay. Well, should we just go and do it for the council so that either way we're covered? Where can you look? No, Chet appointed.
Chet was presidential.
Chet was president and appointed Andrew. Outside of the council meeting, like we weren't even.
Yeah, if if it's a town council presidential appointment, he doesn't have to have an council.
Okay, well, then if that's the case, I would like to appoint. I was feeling powerful there. Is it presidential, okay.
Yeah.
Then I would like to appoint Bob Jewell, the local resident, lives on the west side and works for a community hospital. To fill Andrew's position, that will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-six. Is that fine, is that official enough?
Yes.
Great, moving on to resolution twenty-four twelve, adopting cost principles for spending federal funds. As you know, or many of you know, we just survived an Indiana state administered federal fund audit. And out of that, they advised that we adopt this policy and the next policy. These are just protocol, basically, for. How we spend federal funds when we receive them. Anything to add, Willie, I know Denise heard a little bit about this too, probably.
No, I think Garrett and Denise worked on this and looked everything out. We got into some complicated things where. We applied for grants, the checks were actually written to the businesses, we never saw the money. You know, that kind of thing, and they're just trying to cover several loopholes that deal with the federal government.
So again, these are just internal control documents, basically. Any questions regarding resolution twenty-four twelve, cost principles for spending federal funds? There aren't any questions, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make the motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for approval of resolution twenty-four twelve, adopting cost principles for spending federal funds, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously. Very similar, resolution twenty-four thirteen, this is the procurement policy when we are in the middle of a federal grant. Anything to add to this one, Willie or Denise? Yeah, another internal control document and policy, so. If there aren't any questions, we'll entertain a motion for approval. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for approval of resolution twenty-four thirteen, adopting procurement policy for federal funds, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously. That wraps up new business, I'll turn it over to public comment. There isn't any public comment, anybody have anything up here they would like to share? Oh, yeah.
Karen Glenn's having some growing pains and speeders, since it's not approved of, it's all the neighbors. And so the boys have been out there working hard and diligent on the hallway stops and stuff. We got a FedEx driver today higher than a guy with all of them, so.
Anything from anybody up here before I adjourn? Just one note, special town council meeting on August twenty first, and then in September, we have moved our town council meeting to September nineteenth. At six o'clock here at Town Hall, so just be aware that we have a change in schedule for September. Otherwise, I will make a motion to adjourn at six forty-nine.